Okay, we're live.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee. Welcome to our meeting of December 2nd. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it's streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank SMC Executive Director Mark Sora as well as IT Director Brian LaRue, who assists with all of our meetings. First on the agenda is public participation. No one has asked to speak to the committee this evening, but if anybody wishes to do so, please contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us, and we'd be happy to have you join us by telephone. Next is chairperson and members' report. Does anyone have anything this evening? Nothing? Thank you. Next is superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Fritz. I want to share some news regarding the leadership of Parker Road Preschool. I recently informed the families of Parker Road that Lisa Robinson, who had been the principal of Parker Road Preschool, has notified me of her need to take a medical leave for the remainder of the school year. She also notified me of her desire to depart the district at the end of the school year to pursue other opportunities. And on behalf of certainly Parker Road as well as the district, I wish Ms. Robinson well during her medical leave, and want to certainly say that I'm grateful for the contributions that she's made during her tenure of 11 years as principal, and wish her success in her future endeavors. Bridget Nichols, who is the team chair of Parker Road Preschool, who's also a licensed special education administrator, will serve as the acting director at Parker Road for the remainder of the school year while Ms. Robinson is on medical leave. She'll be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the school, and the parents have the contact information where they can reach her. Certainly confident, we have an excellent preschool staff at Parker Road, and I'm confident that they will continue to serve our preschoolers very well with this leadership transition. The other piece of news I'd like to report is that the Shrewsbury High School mascot ad hoc study group, the application period closed as of Monday. I received 135 applications, which obviously is an enormous amount. I appreciate the thoughtfulness that people put into their rationale for wanting to be on the committee. It will certainly be difficult to determine who will be part of that group. I appreciate the level of interest, and it's going to take me a bit to get through those. I'm hoping and expecting that sometime next week I will be notifying applicants of their status. But again, appreciate the interest in that, and we'll be moving that process forward. And that is superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sora. Next on the agenda will be our update on the school reopening. I'll turn it back to Dr. Sora and staff.
Thank you, and it's just going to be me this evening.
Okay.
And I will continue our routine and start with the key messages that, of course, the health and well-being of our students and our families and our staff is our first priority, that this year we're focused on developing a safe school environment for both of our students and our staff that prioritizes everyone's well-being and is focused, of course, on our core mission, which is high levels of learning for all. And we are operating based on guidance from public health authorities as well as the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, while we continue to look closely at data and information from medical experts and what's happening here in Massachusetts and here in Shrewsbury. The current case count in the district this week to date, starting this past Sunday, we've had 18 cases. That will be the most we've had in one week. And it's only Wednesday, of course. That's mirroring the increase in cases we're seeing in the community and the state. We now have 69 cumulative cases in our hybrid model since the start of school, but we continue to have no cases that have been traced to exposure in school. In a remote program, we continue to only have three cases that have been reported to us. One important piece to note, that the, in terms of district data versus the data that's reported on the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website, we're required as a school district to report every case that we have, whether that's someone in the hybrid model or the remote model, whether that's a student or a staff member. And just as an example, because this has been happening a lot recently, since November 17th, we've had 33 cases in the district. Of those 33, all of which we report to DESI, only five will be reported on their website, because one of their reporting criteria is that the individual who's tested positive must have physically been in school in the last seven calendar days. And the vast majority of these situations are playing out, most recently, that typically, for whatever reason, it could be someone who was quarantining because they were a close contact of someone outside of school, so they had not been in school, and then they tested positive. So they were not during their infectious period when they were physically in school. It could be because of just the way things are lining up with the hybrid model, where someone is not, hasn't been in school because they're only physically present two days out of a seven-day calendar week. And so, again, if someone's looking at the data on DESI and sees low numbers for Shrewsbury and is seeing our reports that are coming out each week, they are not going to align. They also don't happen to do it on a calendar week basis. They do it on a Wednesday to Thursday calendar week basis, or Thursday to Wednesday, I believe. So, again, just want to point that out, that that's just a different approach that they're using for their criteria for reporting cases in schools. This next slide is just, shows how the variability we've seen over the past month, where we had, you know, the first week of November, nine cases, then we only had four. We had 12 the week after that, the week of Thanksgiving, we only had four cases. And again, reporting was still happening through public health and Maven, so... And then when this graph gets posted with this week's dashboard next Monday, obviously that number will be at least 18, if not higher, and likely we'll see some more cases over the course of the next few days. So, again, week to week, we've seen some variability recently. This next slide is the one we've shown each week when we presented relative to the Johns Hopkins University measure of comparing states for the seven-day average positivity rate. You can see that Massachusetts continues to be relatively low compared to the rest of the nation. However, it continues to move in the wrong direction. Two weeks ago, when I reported, it was at 3.22 percent, is now at 3.92 percent, as of the snapshot I took earlier this evening. The next slide shows the positivity rate on a 14-day average. This is what's published each week in the state weekly COVID report. And you see the positivity rate has been climbing over the last several weeks from earlier in the beginning of November, 1.29 percent, now up to 3.88 percent as of last Friday's report. It was not published last Thursday because of the Thanksgiving holiday. So we will find out tomorrow whether that's continued to climb or not, and this is essentially the number of tests that are positive compared to all tests that were taken for Shrewsbury residents over a two-week period of time. The next slide is just a reminder, also some data. You know, the state reports on those weekly reports and gives a color coding to each community in the Commonwealth. As of this past week, Shrewsbury was rated in the yellow zone. Its 14-day average of cases per 100,000 people was 27.7. That's the highest it's been. The previous two-week period, which has a one-week overlap, of course, because they're just taking a two-week period, but the reporting every week, was 20.1. As you can see from the table there, in order to move from yellow to red, it will require the community to go above a 5% positivity rate. And we're hoping that doesn't happen, of course, but, you know, it has been trending in that direction. But I think it's important to note as well, the next slide is again that, you know, what is it that the medical literature and research has been showing makes a difference in terms of reducing the risk of transmission in school? And we are in a position where our district clearly is in the two sort of green shaded areas of lowest and lower risk based on the statistics. And as far as the five strategies, consistent and correct use of masks, social distancing, hand hygiene, cleaning and disinfection, and contact tracing, all of those are happening in a very strong way in our school community, which I believe is the reason why we are not seeing transmission in schools. And we appreciate everyone's cooperation and vigilance in taking those measures. The updated guidance from the state, which I've been sharing the last few weeks, and the sort of the key element there is highlighted in blue. You know, the department, you know, defines transmission in schools as the spread of the virus between people, interactions in the school setting. And again, that's not something that we've seen in Shrewsbury to date, which is good news, because obviously we have had cases come from the outside, although, as I mentioned earlier, many times those cases were never in school during the time they would have been infectious. But the, you know, the state is saying that we need to prioritize in-person learning, regardless of the color-coded category that they are placing the community in. And on the next slide, you can see that they're indicating, again, this is what the guidance and is from the state level, to have students fully learning in person, if feasible, which I bolded, because that's not something for us that's feasible right now, and that, you know, even if the community were to move into the red, the state is recommending the hybrid program that we already have. And I'll speak a little bit more to feasibility and to some of the benefits of being in the hybrid program in terms of stability in a few slides from now. But at this point, you know, I want to emphasize that we have, you know, a real focus on maintaining stability. You know, our current hybrid program minimizes close contacts who need to quarantine because we're doing six-foot distancing, and the definition of a close contact is someone who's been within six feet for a 15-minute period or more. And so, when we have had cases that have been present in school, and it's based on the look-back rules that are applied by public health officials, we are not seeing a lot of close contacts because we are maintaining that distancing. The alternating schedule, as I mentioned earlier, is also playing into that, not only for people not being in school when they're infectious. Because of that, rather, we are not in a situation where we likely would have more close contacts potentially, obviously, if people were in school. So I know that, you know, I've had some inquiries from individuals asking or wondering, like, why aren't we making a move back to full in-person learning, given that that is the guidance from the state unless the community is in the red zone? And part of my reluctance around that, or a couple of things, certainly because it's quite possible, given the trends, that we could end up in the red category at some point in the near future, but also because I am very cognizant that there have been situations where school districts, both in Massachusetts and elsewhere, have had to close and go to full remote learning because of the level of quarantining that's happening, and they're not able to fully staff their schools. So it's something that even now, with the limited number that we've had, we've been on the edge a few times of how we are maintaining the level of supervision and instruction within the school setting. And my concern would be if we move into, because the six-foot rule around close contacts is not changing. You know, we're cognizant that there's guidance from the state around schools being able to be within less than six feet, but our agreement right now and our plan is all about having six-foot distancing, and I believe that is helping us maintain the stability of the program that we do have. I don't think it's beneficial to be in a situation where there's lots of stops and starts happening, where you're full remote, you can come back in person, then all of a sudden you're back in full remote again. The stability and the predictability is a benefit during a time of crisis. So I think that's important to note. Certainly, it's concerning. The community case count and the positivity rate that are increasing are concerning to me. But again, there's still no evidence of in-school transmission, which is certainly a key element that we're looking at relative to being able to maintain our hybrid program. So with that, just to wrap up, I want to shift to a couple of thoughts. First, given that this is the season of Thanksgiving, I wanted to indicate reasons that I think we should be thankful. First off, as I mentioned in my recent column in the Shrewsbury School Journal, I believe that our staff's dedication and their expertise are unsurpassed. And certainly in responding to the challenges of educating students during the pandemic, they have done a remarkable job, and I could not be more proud of the effort and the skill that our educators and support staff are bringing to this work every day. I'm also thankful for our families because of their ongoing support of their children's learning under very difficult circumstances, and those circumstances are particularly difficult for the families of our youngest students, but there are challenges for students of all ages. And third, I'm very appreciative and thankful about our students' responsiveness to what is being asked of them. We have terrific young people that we serve in our schools, and they really, by and large, really try to do what is expected of them and come through and are really a privilege to work with. However, if you go to the next slide, at the same time, there's many reasons to be thankful. There are reasons to be concerned. The level of effort that's required on the part of our staff to make things work is proving difficult to sustain. I had hoped that after, you know, a period of time, and we're just 50 days plus into the school year now, that things would smooth out a bit, and I know in some cases they have, the people have adapted, but the level of effort that it's continued to take has been absolutely substantial. At the same time, many families are having a hard time supporting their children's learning under challenging circumstances. I believe every family wants to and is doing their best to try to support what their child needs, but there are situations where that is very difficult and where families are struggling. And then, in addition, while the vast majority of our students are doing very well in managing the situation and adapting, there are too many who are not successfully engaging with learning or who are struggling emotionally. And this is something that we are paying a lot of attention to. I am certainly hearing loud and clear, both from the survey we talked about at our last meeting, also from our leadership team and our principals, that we are concerned. We have a very good handle on who these students are, and we're working to address these issues in partnership with families. But there are certainly many more students who are struggling that would be happening under typical circumstances. And that is everything from very serious mental health concerns to just, you know, students who are not, you know, completing the work that's being asked of them for some reason, or not being as present as we'd like them to be in a remote setting. And these are things that obviously worry all of us as educators and who are responsible for these young people. So these are very, I think it's very important that we're not sugarcoating what our situation is. There are lots of things that are going well, but there are a lot of challenges that cause, that are cause for concern. This next slide is just a sample of a few headlines that I screenshotted earlier of different articles that I've seen or read in recent times. And this is not unique to Shrewsbury. It's not unique to Massachusetts. This is something that is a struggle all over the nation relative to what's happening, whether those are parents who are really having a hard time supporting their students, whether that's the issue of much higher demand for student psychiatric services. That was an article just recently in the Worcester Telegram, article in the New York Times recently talking about teaching in the pandemic not being sustainable or being very challenging to be sustainable. And then, of course, the idea of just the fear of, you know, whether, what the right decision is in terms of what program your child's in. And then the issue, and I know that Ms. Carter will speak to this a little bit later in her presentation, you know, what are we looking at in terms of the potential for significant learning loss over time for students? So these are very real things, and there are things that certainly affect us here in Shrewsbury as well. So I will conclude by just commenting that, you know, I certainly want the community to know that we will, as we always do, continue to give our very best on behalf of our students. But at the same time, I think it's really critical that we're realistic about the situation we're in. Reopening schools, educating our students in a pandemic has challenged us like nothing else we've experienced in our careers. I continue to be very proud of how we've adapted, but I am worried and concerned because the level of effort required to do this work is difficult to sustain. And as a result, I think we have to be very clear about what our priorities are, and we have to be realistic about our limits. I think the vast majority of our constituents have been understanding and flexible and recognizing this is a different scenario, but there are certainly, as always, different levels of demand and different perceptions that people have and perspectives. But I think it's going to be very important, and from me and the leadership team, to be clear that, you know, we cannot do everything that we would typically do under normal circumstances. So we have to focus on what the priorities are and be realistic about the limits that we do face. And finally, just that there are, certainly, if there were easy answers, we would be implementing them. There aren't easy answers here, but that doesn't mean we aren't continuing to seek ways to support our students, to support our staff and our families. We will be meeting again with the leadership team tomorrow morning, and that will be a major part of our agenda again. What can we do to try to make sure that we're supporting people the best we can? Where is it that we can certainly empathize with the things that we can't change, but look at things that we can do to make adjustments in order to help people make our way through? We will get through this. Obviously, there seems to be potentially some good medical news on the horizon, but at the same time, the next couple of months, there's the possibility and that it's going to be quite difficult. And, you know, it remains to be seen what this will look like. But we need to make sure that we are working together with one another, providing that flexibility and grace that we've talked about in figuring out how we can make sure that, while we're doing our best, we're also not setting unrealistic expectations for ourselves. So with that, that concludes my update this evening, and I'd be happy to take any questions or comments from the committee.
Thank you, Dr. Sora. Any comments or questions? Lindsay?
Yeah, and first, I really want to thank everybody in the Shrewsbury Public School system for their incredible hard work. And certainly, as a parent, I see it. I see the creativity today during one of these funny Wednesday days that are all, where everybody is remote. The, I think the entire fifth grade team, I'm not quite sure, had an author on for a book they'd been reading, and they found a way to really... And my son was so excited to tell me, "We're getting to see the author." She's holding, now I'm forgetting her name, holding the book and saying, "That's her. She's right here." So, you know, trying to make the best of this, but I also recognize that I get emails late in the evening from teachers, and they're, you know, you can just, you can see it in all they're doing. So an incredible thank you to all of them. I think a question for you, Dr. Sora, and there may be a comment for my colleagues here, but just on the staffing shortages that have caused issues in other districts. I know we heard from Ms. Malone a few weeks ago about challenges finding substitute staffing. Is this a concern that we should be having as the numbers are climbing? What is that, is that a where you have, or are we at a fairly, an okay place given where we're at? I wonder what you're reading the tea leaves.
Based on, it is a concern, and I think based on what we've seen, you know, the likelihood of people needing to quarantine because of contacts that may have happened outside of school may be more likely to create a staffing shortages than some sort of spread in school. We're not seeing spread in school. That said, you know, depending on the situation, there are occasions where we have had to quarantine people because of the potential that they were within six feet of someone for 15 minutes when they were in school, who was in school during their infectious period. So if the level of community spread continues to climb, and again, you saw that chart, Massachusetts continues to be in a relatively strong place compared to the rest of the country. But if we start moving into that direction where we have much, much higher positivity rates, inevitably, there'll be more cases in school, the potential for more quarantining. And because of the lack of substitutes, I think it is a very realistic... I was on a superintendent's call the other day with Worcester County superintendents, and there were a couple of superintendents talking about how they were really on the edge a couple of times, being able to hold school, just having enough adults in the building to safely manage the kids who were there in person. And there's other districts who have even shut down for a week or so just because they needed to get their staffing stabilized because of quarantining. So I think it is a very real possibility. Hopefully, we can avoid it, but it's something that we have to be cognizant of.
Yeah, I think, given the lack of in-school spread, which we're all, you know, appreciating and knowing that all the efforts are worth it, it seems like the biggest concern for us. In order to keep schools safe, we need staff in the building. I think the point you were making about the overall stress level and that everything can't be a priority, I think we do play a bit of a role in that, and I brought it up a few weeks ago when we talked about our budget. I think for us as a school committee to look, if at nothing else, at our strategic priorities, to figure out where can we reset or recalibrate, you know, and either change our priorities or change the timelines on our priorities, and if there's anything that we can do to dial down any of it, much of it is out of our control at this point. This is a very hard year, but if there's a place for that, I'd encourage us to think, how soon can we get that onto our agenda and go through a proper process? But to say, what are we doing? I mean, it'd be easy to just say, let's extend our strategic priorities a year, but maybe we want to be even more thoughtful. And I think that's maybe a something that we can do, at least for some of the administrators. If there's anything we can remove from the plate, that's, I think, a worthwhile thing for us to consider. So I'd offer that to you, Madam Chair, to think about how and when is the right place to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason?
Actually, just to first echo Ms. Heffernan's remarks about having a thoughtful approach to that, I have to say, I'm not surprised that, as ever, we're flying on the backs of our staff who are still performing at extraordinarily high levels despite everything that they're facing. I appreciate the superintendent and your team focusing on staff morale on top of everything else and keeping an eye on staff's stress levels. I know that our staff hold themselves to extraordinarily high standards. That's a huge part of why they work for Shrewsbury Public Schools in the first place. And I know that it can be difficult for staff in this district at all levels to realize that there are things that maybe they can't do or can't do the way that they used to. And it's starting to become clear, to Ms. Heffernan's point, that that's a conversation we need to have amongst ourselves as well. We're all school committee members. We do this because we care about Shrewsbury Public Schools, how thoughtful we were about those strategic five-year priorities. It fills me with extraordinary anger to think that we are going to have to maybe step back from some of those things, because some of those things are things that we have been talking about for years and years and years. But to Ms. Heffernan's point, the reality of the situation is creeping into the point where we need to live up to our commitment that everyone's health, including everyone's mental health, need to come first. So I am loathe, loathe to entertain a conversation that might smack in any way, shape, or form of lowering standards, but I think it is a good idea to have a conversation under the circumstances about not walking away from anything, but perhaps re-examining some timelines.
John?
I would just add to that. I agree that we do need to recalibrate our priorities. I think that's very important for that post-COVID view. I don't know that I look at it so much of lowering standards as I do level-setting expectations under extreme circumstances, right? I think we need to be realistic about what our educators can handle under these circumstances, because these priorities were drafted under what we all consider as normal circumstances. What is normal right now? We don't know what that looks like. We don't, we won't know what that looks like for a year or two. Who knows? Who knows what the cases, I do think, we need to look at it, we need to recalibrate, we need to be thoughtful about it, so.
And I agree. I think it's one of these situations where it's, human nature does say, well, this is what we've done. This is, Shrewsbury is a high-performing district. This is what we do. But the realities of our times have changed, and we need to really be careful how we move forward, what's doable, what maybe has to wait for a while, and recalibrate, and make sure that educators, families, and students have some breathing room where possible, because this is not the normal situation. And going forward, like John said, we don't know how long this will last in this type of environment. Hopefully, not that long, but I agree, it's something we should really add to a future agenda to look at ways that we can maybe do things a little differently or put off for a short period of time. So thank you for that feedback. Anything further, Dr. Sora?
I appreciate the commentary, and I think that certainly we can bring something forward and some recommendations around that in terms of recalibrating. And certainly, we're looking at things internally, administratively. I know we pushed back report card grading deadline by a week or a week and a half or so to give a little breathing room to educators. I know today, principals gave staff meeting time at the elementary and middle school level to allow teachers some time to work on grades, otherwise it would have been used for other kinds of meeting responsibilities. So, you know, anything we can do to try to, you know, hit the pressure valve and give a little relief where we can is something that we're looking to try to figure out how to do. And it's, I think, you know, I had a conversation earlier actually with Dr. Anne Jones, the principal at Oak Middle School, and reminded me that when you look at things in their totality, it can feel very overwhelming, but sometimes if you're able to focus down on the individual and take things one step at a time, whether that's one student at a time, one issue at a time, and be comfortable that we can't do everything all at once, and shrink the change, as they say, that is something that I think we need to consider as well. But appreciate the support of comments of the school committee, and, you know, obviously, all of us would love to be in a different situation. I think, again, we have to define and be cognizant of what our realities are and do the best we can with the circumstances that we have, and be realistic about what those limits are within those circumstances. So, thank you, and we'll continue to update you as we go forward.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we'll have a SHS Class of 2020 Future Plans Report. Each year, the high school administration provides data on the post-high school plans of the most recent graduating class. Tonight, we have Mr. Todd Bazilo, the high school principal, along with Naowen, the director of counseling, school counseling SHS, to provide the report. Welcome.
Thanks for having us. I want to thank Mrs. Wen and our entire school counseling department for putting together a number of these stats that are found in your report. We put together a slideshow for the community here to get a better understanding of the successes we had. Although, an abbreviated version of the Class of 2020 certainly... the successes we had, although an abbreviated version of the Class of 2020, certainly they are quite a crew, so it will be remembered forever. So if we want to move on to the next slide, that'd be great. So of the 487 students that graduated in Class of 2020 who attained a diploma, 83% attended a four-year college, 9% a two-year college or technical school. In an uptick here, 8% entered the employment field, were enlisted in military, or were undecided. Some of the challenges that I saw this past year, we had people opting for more of a gap year, undecided based upon who could return to campus, who couldn't return to campus. Some students were unfortunately locked in the programs as a result of some universities wouldn't allow students out for a gap year. So there's, it was certainly an uncertain time and uncertain beginning for the Class of 2020 this past fall.
So with the students that have graduated and gone on to four-year and two-year colleges, we looked at the public and private matriculations of the students. So if you look at the graph, we have 90% of the students attending four-year colleges and 10% attending a two-year college. In terms of looking at the public and the private universities, we have 56% that attended the public colleges and universities, and 44% attended the private colleges and universities. And when you look at the trend, we really see that it's, it's been pretty stable for the past few years.
We al, we also look at gender. This is the first time in a long time that we've had almost equal male and female representation in the class. There's typically anywhere between, you know, 50 or 75 females greater in each class than males. So we take a look at how those students and those genders compare to each other. If the female pie chart, which is on the left, 91% attended four-year colleges, 5% went to employment or had other plans, and 2% attended college or career education. Sorry, 5% attended two-year college or career education. For males, on the right-hand graph, it's hard to see, but for those in the audience and those that might need their glasses, 75% of males attended a four-year college/university, 10% opted for employment or had other plans, and 15% attended college, two-year college or career technical education.
So before I start this next slide, I just want to kind of preface it a little bit about the process of how students choose colleges. Typically, when we meet with students, we work with a, a list of colleges. We have students who choose some reach colleges, some likely colleges, and also some probable colleges that the students would target, schools that the students would possibly get into. So we try to have a range of colleges when we're working with students in terms of where they're actually going to apply. What's interesting about this is this information really looks at how the intensity of the college process can be for students and families, and what we've seen over the years that it's, it keeps growing, and it's part of that, that intensity of getting into a college and the whole brand name, schools, and stuff like that. So we started to look at the total applications for the Class of 2020. So even though we did have an increase of students in this class compared to 2019, we processed 3,848 applications last year for students in terms of applying to college. And then looking at the number of colleges that students actually applied to, we broke it down into the top 25% GPAs, which is in the top part of this slide. So we had seven students apply to over 20 colleges, and the highest number of applications by an individual student is 33. We had 19 students apply to, apply to colleges between 15 and 19 applications, 30 students apply between 11 and 14 applications, and overall, we had 50 students apply to over 10 schools. So typically, we advise students between six to eight colleges, which is what the, the colleges do recommend if a student really did their research well. We've seen on average about 10 schools is okay too, but once the number hits to a really high number, a lot of questions come into play in terms of partially the anxieties of the students in terms of applying to colleges, but it really comes down to the research of looking at what is the best fit for the student. When we look at the students with the GPAs in the top 26 to 50%, this is where we are seeing more of an increase. We had seven students apply to over 20 colleges. The highest number of applications in this group is 24 colleges for an individual student. We have 12 students apply between 15 to 19 applications, 20 students apply between 11 and 14 applications, and overall, 39 students apply to over 10 schools. And this number last year for the Class of 2019 was actually 23%, and right now for this group, it's 35%. So we're certainly seeing an increase in that. One of the things we also look at is the early action and early decision. And just to remind people, the early decision applications are students who are choosing schools that they know they want to attend. If they're accepted, it's a binding contract that they would be attending those schools. The early action deadlines for students that are applying with an early deadline, the colleges will notify the students with their results early, but it's not binding. They still have until the deposit day, May 1st, in order to make that decision. So in terms of the number of students that applied early decision, we had 42. The number of students that applied early action is 264, which is about 54% of the senior class applying early action. And you can see the number of applications that went in with the early action, 1,048 applications. One of the, over the past several years, what we've seen in terms of early action, it is certainly an incentive for students to know early if they have been accepted to schools. What we've seen over the past few years, a lot of incentives, incentives on the college end. There are certainly stu, colleges where if you apply early action, you can qualify for additional scholarships with the college. Also, with a lot of early action programs, the fee for the application is waived. So if you look at the, the number of colleges that students are applying to, the application fee can really add up. I think right now, the highest application fee is $105 for that, for one school. Typically, we see the range usually between 75 to 85 is average. So when you look at the number of colleges that students are applying to, those, that those fees really add up for, for students and families. And I want to say, I believe BU is at $80 for the application, UMass Amherst is $80. So the number, the amount increases each year, so it's becoming quite pricey for that.
If I can just interject for a minute, I would also say, if you look at the number of applications, if you would just go back to that slide, I mean, 1,048 applications are going out from our school counseling department. Those deadlines are typically November and December 1st, November 15th, summer even earlier than November 15th. So, I mean, the amount of work that's happening in our counseling department at the beginning of the school year, on top of balancing all the schedules and getting those things, applications out, kudos to them. It's a huge lift for 54% of a senior class to go some form of early action. But it also suggests that students and families are doing their research, too. You can look and find merit scholarships or aid, like Mrs. Wen said, or higher percentage of acceptance rates for early action, early decision. So I think if you know where you're going to go, kids will apply early decision, hopefully that, you know, there's a higher percentage of students that get accepted to those two categories. The other thing I would suggest, say too, if I can just for a minute, I, I want to say to the community, like, seven to 10 colleges is the right number. You have to do your homework and narrow it down. I think there's a lot of numbers up here, and I'm not suggesting that people are doing it wrong, but I would say that there's a lot of work and effort that goes into that. And I think that the more research you do, the more time you put into it, you can narrow that down, it creates a little bit more of a focus. I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I just think there's a lot there for students and families, and a lot of pressure that might be unnecessary based upon the type of focus or program people are looking for. So when I see those numbers, it's a little bit shocking to me, and we talked about it a bunch, but we try and say, like, try and find that sweet spot of seven to 10 and narrow it down from there, because even then, you have to narrow it down. And it's hard to do, so for those in the audience that are watching, this is, this is on the high end. You can shoot for the seven to 10, 10's, 10's a great number, so.
And I think for the seniors, a lot of seniors will describe applying to college as an additional course. So when you're adding multiple applications, you're talking about multiple and different essays that students are writing, the amount of work that goes into an application is quite a bit. So the amount of time that students have to spend adds to that stress. So the next thing that we take a look at is the geographic breakdown of where students are applying and attending. Looking at the Class of 22, students were accepted to 278 different colleges and universities in 35 different states, District of Columbia, India, and Ireland. In terms of actual matriculation, students are enrolled in 142 different colleges and universities in 31 different states, District of Columbia and Ireland. And looking at the pie chart in comparison to last year, it's pretty similar. Most of the students do stay within the New England region, I think more so after this spring with the experience that we've had with the pandemic. So I, I think the one thing that I saw that was a little bit different, every year we have some trend schools. We had a little bit of an increase in students going out to the Midwest for schools, not a huge, large amount, but certainly a little bit of an increase compared to past years. But pretty much, it's, it's typical.
For those in the audience, out-of-region schools often offer more merit and scholarship aid because they're trying to get a demographic they don't have, where the vast majority of students who live in any geographic in the United States typically are about two to three hours away from their home, typically. So when you go out of region, there could be potential more money or scholarship possibilities as well, because they're trying to fit a certain demographic from a certain state. So, and again, I've always said, I think that some of our students, we're almost at a disadvantage being in New England, we're competing against some of the most, or probably some of the best schools in the country, public schools in the country, and also some private schools in the country in the Northeast. And if we're all going to go in the same geographic region, it becomes more difficult to get into those schools just based on sheer numbers. So, interesting stuff to think about when you, for those that have gone through the process, you can understand it.
So when we look at the selectivity of the schools that the students are attending, we're going by the Baron Selectivity Guide, as you can see on the screen. It's pretty much broken down from most competitive, highly competitive, very competitive, competitive schools, less competitive, and the special schools. And the special schools usually consist of art schools or health science schools that just have one, one type of program at that school, so it's more specialized. In terms of looking at the selectivity, it's pretty similar from year to year, but if you look at the trend over the past three years, there's a little bit of an increase, certainly with students being accepted or attending in the most competitive section. That was an increase of 6% of students in that area. So the students did well last year in terms of where they chose to go, in terms of the competitiveness of the schools.
In terms of special students who received special education services, we had 42 students in the Class of 2020, that's about 9% of the population. Of those 42 students, 47% attended a four-year college, 36% attended a two-year college, and 17% entered the military or workforce. Additionally, next slide, we broke it down by who attended private and public. So if we look at this, it's pretty consistent with what we've seen in the past, where 47% are attending public college/university at a four-year level, 36 at a two-year, and then the 17 at another. At this time, we'll take any questions the committee may have.
Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Jason.
Just on the, on the topic of the, the number of applications that students are putting in, I recognize, obviously, we don't exercise any control, that's a private family decision, it's a private student decision, but obviously some of, some of those numbers were a little bit surprising. What kinds of conversations, generally speaking, might a guidance counselor have with a student where that, that type of situation was presenting itself, understanding that they can't instruct a student not to do something?
Right. So typical conversations are usually, we do ask the students, have they done their research? We dig a little deeper in terms of why they're choosing particular schools, and we really do try to have students think, make really thoughtful decisions of why they're choosing schools, whether it's a particular program or making sure students are not choosing schools for their brand name, or their best friend is applying to and planning to go, or, so that there's so many different reasons. What I've definitely seen with some, some of the higher numbers are some of the, the panic anxiety that comes to where will I get accepted into the schools? So some of, a number of applications will come in right at the tail end, after counselors have, like, really done that work. But we do encourage students to dig a little bit deeper, even looking at what they're interested in studying, looking at the programs. Have you, have you looked at the programs deeply? Have you talked to admissions? Have you talked to, a lot of schools do offer for students to have overnight visits, although now it's virtual. But certainly be able to talk to students, be able to, in those majors, be able to talk to professors. A lot of colleges actually now with the pandemic have really been outreach to students and families, offering to talk to professors and students, and really trying to make that, that connection. And I think making sure that students have a connection to why they're applying to particular schools is the most important thing, rather than just kind of making choices based on, a lot of times when we see the larger numbers, it is based on the reputations of the schools or the brand names as opposed to that, that personal reason of why, because sometimes those numbers, it's not a concentrated region that students are applying to with the larger numbers, they're really spread out all over the US. And I know with, in conversation with a lot of colleges, they really want students to make that special effort to find that best fit for them, because they're also doing the same, they want to find the best fit student for their university as well. So a lot of conversations go into that multiple, and sometimes it's an ongoing conversation, because a student is not bringing the list to the counselors, I'm applying to these 20 schools right now. It will start off with a reasonable number, and then it keeps on adding, so it's a lot of conversations.
Thank you.
John.
Yeah, just, I want to comment, as a parent that had just gone through the process last year, I do appreciate the level of communication, the education that you provide, not only students but families. Even, you look at the calendar of the school counseling events by month, August to April, you really hold our hand through the process, and I, I know I'm appreciative of that. I mean, having applied to the five schools that I did, I know how much work that is and the anxiety around that, but to see some of the, the numbers you were showing around the, you know, 15 to 20 schools, it'd make my head spin. So, so I definitely felt like, you know, learned a lot through the process, and I'm ready for round two over the next four years, so, thank you.
And I, you know, echo what John says, I think it's such a stressful process for families and students, there's a lot of family pressure, peer pressure. And when we're talking about the stress students are under right now with just trying to get an education, are you seeing an increase in anxiety around college applications more than last year?
Yes, I, I think, and, and even in our department, we certainly struggle with the, the virtual world of researching a college. How do you research a college without stepping foot on campus? And, and really kind of trying to dig deep in, in looking at things a little bit creatively. Like I said, have you really had the opportunity to talk to students? Have you had the opportunity to talk to professors? Really look at the programs much more in-depth and ask the right questions? A lot of times, we lead students to do that. It's funny that you say the hand-holding piece. We do hand-hold to a certain extent, but we, we do try to push our seniors to take that lead and, and kind of practice that self-advocacy and research skills that they're going to need beyond high school when they don't have that kind of wraparound services with teachers and counselors. So I, I think the stress level is certainly higher, and I think this particular year, as students are trying to adjust to the hybrid program, the remote program, the students that make that transition and change even during their senior year and trying to apply to colleges, I think certainly has added to the stress and the challenges for students, even to making decisions, has been challenging.
Right. A question I have, because we talk a lot about the cost of college education.
Right. A question I have, because we talk a lot about the cost of college education, two, four-year, private, public. It's very expensive regardless where you go. Do you track or do you look at the number of scholarships students are getting or even a percent of aid that they might get to the total bill? So that we can use that data to discuss how much this really will cost families down the road.
So we don't track that information. I did try tracking it one year, but it was never an accurate, it was so far from accurate because of the, the information that we would try to gather. I think the difficult thing is as students receive financial aid packages, that's the information that we would need. And a lot of families do hold that pretty privately because it, their financial information is part of that. But it is difficult to kind of track the accuracy of, of that. So, and I've seen schools that tried to do that, but I, I would have to say in terms of trying that, I don't think it's very accurate.
Accurate, okay, great, thank you. Dr. Sora, any comments or questions on this piece? Sorry, Dale.
Just a follow-up on that question, even if you can't get information from individual students or our district, are the perhaps top 10 schools or whatever that we send students to able to provide us with profiles of financial aid that they provide? So that we can get an idea as to if your parents make this much, how much you're going to be asked to pay?
So that's a little bit more, actually that's, that's challenging because when schools provide us, if they were to provide us with that information, it's really, it's really trying to provide us that information without giving any other data, any other data in terms of the family and determining who got what. I think it's, it's difficult to get that information specific for Shrewsbury High School. Getting that information really entails, it, it's almost kind of like a guesswork. So if we had five kids apply to this one particular school and they give us information and then we can kind of, you can almost, you may be able to kind of guess where, who, who got what money. Certainly in terms of scholarships, if there are particular like presidential scholarships or specific scholarships that students are getting, what we're seeing with some students reporting some of their financial aid packages, they may get some of that scholarships. But there are other scholarships that kind of fall into play that's not, kind of not publicly advertised.
Well, it's, it's, but it sounds like the difference between getting perfect information and getting something. And I, I think, you know, what I'm inquiring is I, I believe that colleges are able to give a general profile. For example, Harvard will say if your parents make below X, you don't have to pay tuition. If they make below Y, you don't even have to pay housing expenses. That's a particular program, but other schools I believe are, are in a position to make general statements regarding where they're, you know, what level of financial aid gets provided in the general profile. I just wonder if, if that kind of information, not specific to Shrewsbury at all, but just, you know, BU. You know, how much financial aid do they get and what does the person look like who gets it?
Right. I can certainly look into that in terms of getting the general, general numbers. And the difficult thing sometimes is that the amount of time that that research takes place for the number of colleges that the students are applying to would make it challenging. But certainly I can look at the most popular schools that the students are applying to, looking at that list.
Yeah, it looks to me like there's like 10 that take care of a pretty high percentage of our students.
Thank you. Dr. Sora, any comments or questions?
I certainly want to thank Ms. Wen and, and the School Counseling Department for their, their efforts. And I think this year, you heard in the recent report that Mr. Nevada and Mr. Buzillo provided just how challenging it's been around scheduling this year because of the hybrid model and those circumstances. And as you heard, certainly there's all kinds of new challenges in terms of helping our students make some of those decisions about where they might be applying for school. And, and I'm confident that, you know, they'll, they'll do a terrific job supporting them. You know, I think the report again was very well done. I think that I continue to be proud that, you know, we are not a school district where we are pushing brand names or, or trying to push for some sort of level of exclusivity in terms of the colleges our kids go to. We're really trying to focus on the issue of fit because we want them to be successful in college. And, and I know Mr. Buzillo has spoken about many times in, in the book by Frank Bruni, you know, the whole, the title being, you know, where you go is not who you will be. And focusing on what, what a good match is for students' aspirations in situations and including, you know, in all the educational pieces that they do for families that take into account value and affordability as well as the other factors that are involved. So I appreciate that. I know that Ms. Wen and her department and Mr. Buzillo reinforce those messages. And has, having gone through, you know, the class of 2020 is the first time that I have a, a child is in those statistics and certainly felt that, that it was, it was as advertised. And so thank you for all the efforts in, in making this work for our students.
Next we'll move into the Shrewsbury High School testing annual report.
Great, well, thanks for having us back-to-back. Coupled with our future plans report, we certainly want to share kind of the metrics for what we saw over the last school year relative to standardized testing. Again, I think it's another good news story. Ms. Wen will lead us through the explanation of standardized tests and we'll go through some of the numbers for you. And again, I want to thank her for coordinating this with her, her department this year and Mr. Monopoly as well, who oversees the, our SAT prep program and also advanced placement. And Susie Ariel, who's our coordinator and the counselors. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of work for all this, but I, I do appreciate their hard work for it. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Wen.
So just to give you an overview of the standardized test that we track in here, we have the SATs and the ACTs. Either one of these are required for college admissions. Although I just want to add this year, due to the pandemic, many, many schools have foregone the SAT or the ACT requirements. They've become test optional, some for one year, some for two years, and some for good. So there's been a lot of changes. It'll be interesting to see over the next few years where that will be. The other set that we do go over is the subject test, and that's through the College Board. There are specific subject tests and it's typically required by only about 45 to 50 colleges and some with very specific programs that students may be applying to. Then we do have the PSAT and MSQT, and that is basically the practice SAT. There is the practice ACT called the plan. We don't administer that at our school. And then finally, we have the advanced placement exam where if students do well, they can obtain college credit and/or placement out of the introductory course at the college that they attend.
So 2020 had a little bit of advantage over class of 2021 because they got to actually visit campuses. So we'll see how that looks out for the future plans report next year. But they also are faced with a different challenge as well in terms of trying to find placement for SAT actual testing sites. We've offered it twice this fall at Shrewsbury High School, but there have been a number of students within the community that have traveled across the region as far away as Pennsylvania during the summertime to get tests because schools were shut down. So I think not recognizing that and the efforts that families put in to get standardized testing shouldn't go unnoticed by people in the community. For those that traveled out of state, whether it's New Hampshire, Maine, Vermont, Rhode Island, Connecticut, or New York, or Pennsylvania, and they were in school, they all came back and got a PCR test and were allowed to come back to school after testing negative. So it's been a, it's been kind of a very interesting ride for the class of 2021 this school year. In terms of the test administration, College Board test administration, score reporting changes, this, this occurred back in 2016 when they revised the evidence-based reading and writing and math and separated the score for writing. The separate score for writing was eliminated. We've offered a summer SAT and ACT dates to our testing calendar. The Saturday PSAT and College Board's moving towards, towards, I don't want to say forcing, but certainly moving towards eliminating dates on Saturdays to try and have school districts provide these tests, whether it's PSAT or SAT during the school day, which certainly during a pandemic can cause some issues. But even a regular year is a challenge, and we'll see how that plays out in the next couple of years. And as we see on the fourth bullet down, March, May, and June SATs were canceled this past year. And there are significant changes with the AP administration for testing last spring, meaning students didn't report to a site, they took them from home. The tests were no longer two, three-hour tests, they were 45-minute sessions approximately, give or take. So the other change that has happened and we've been reporting on is that the mean scores reported to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education only are the results of a school year results, not graduating class results. So that has been a little bit different and changed over the years. We don't necessarily, can't really extrapolate one graduating class scores per se. And the subject area tests are no longer formally reported as part of the cohort report. So there's been some changes with the College Board. The College Board test is, is, and I would, maybe you could help me, it almost mirrors, or not mirrors, but it's got more in line with ACT testing. So becoming very similar in terms of the way they administer tests where in years past, it was more reasoning and logic for the SAT and ACT was more of a content-based test. So they're kind of, they're running pretty close together now.
So in terms of looking at the redesigned SAT scales, it's, they're keeping with the 200 to 800 score range for the evidence-based reading, writing, and math. And they, because they eliminated the writing piece, we're only looking at the 1600 scale when combining both of them. So looking at the mean scores for the SATs, what we have, if you look on the chart, it's pretty similar from year to year. Shrewsbury High School, our students have, continues to perform very well over the, both the state and the national level. Slight dip, but not really significant in terms of a difference for our students. And then in terms of looking at the, the gender trend of the tests, if you look at, this is for the evidence-based reading and writing scores. It's pretty similar from year to year. Female students score, tend to score higher on the evidence-based reading and writing. You see that closing the gap just a little bit last year compared to the year before. And then for the math, we have the opposite effect. But you can also see again, over the past five years, we're closing the gap with the math. So even though the male students typically perform higher than the female students, it's getting a little bit closer, so. When we look at the subject tests, as stated before, this is not required by all schools. Typically, it's only 40 to 50 schools in the entire United States that may require it for admissions. There are some schools who do require particular tests for specific majors, typically in the math and the sciences. Some of the strong math and science schools may require students to take either a math or a science test. But looking at these scores, again, the highest score range is, 800 is the number. Our students last year performed very well with the subject tests. All of the scores were certainly above, above the tests compared to the scores from last year. With the exception of, of two tests, the physics and the math one were a little bit below from last year's scores. But all other scores were well above the scores compared to last year. So the PSAT and the MSQ, NMSQT exam is a national test. So this test, for families to understand, the, these scores don't go anywhere. It is a scholarship qualifying test. So these scores are not the scores that go to the colleges, but certainly for students who qualify for the National Merit Scholarship. Certainly students get that recognition. The actual scholarship is $2,500. And typically for the students who attend particular scholarship, particular colleges, those colleges usually match that. So typical award letters could be $5,000 for the National Merit. However, there are certain colleges out there for students at this level are also giving addition, even more money towards the tuition for that as well. So last year, we had 26 students that were commended that did very well in the PSATs. We had three students who were finalists. As finalists, they, they complete an additional application. And then we did have one scholarship recipient for that. And again, it's extremely competitive, especially at the national level. The next test that we'll talk about is the ACT. The trend that we've seen with the ACT is that the, both the East Coast and the West Coast, the SAT is very popular, the ACT is much more popular when we look at the middle of the country and also the South. So we're looking at the trends a little bit differently with the ACT. Massachusetts has one of the lowest ACT participation rates because we're so SAT-focused. And that's just been the trend for, for the East Coast. So when we look at the ACT participation of last year, it's certainly taking another dip. So that it's 95 students from last year. One of the things that we've noticed with the, the, the number of students taking the SAT has increased while the ACT has decreased. With that change that Mr. Buzillo talked about earlier in terms of the redesign of the SAT, there's been a lot of, a, a big campaign to increase that participation. So a lot of advertisements have gone out for that. They've also added on Khan Academy, which is a free test prep, they've partnered with them for the SAT. So we're seeing definitely a higher participation with the SAT even from before. And the ACT was quite low this past year. But in terms of looking at the scores, the students who did take the ACT did very well. You can see that the scores have increased for the students who took it compared to last year. And you can see that the equivalent, what that would look like if they were to take approximately, that approximate score for the SAT. So last year, the students' average ACT composite score was 27.7. That's about roughly the equivalent to about 1310 on the SAT, which is a pretty high score.
Great, so I'll walk us through the advanced placement scoring for the year. If we move to the pie chart, you can see that 55% of students in grade 12, which is in this, 40% in grade 11. And then we had about six, little five or six percent in grades nine and 10. And we don't recommend anyone under, we don't allow anyone under in grades nine and 10 to take AP courses at our school. But these are some students that might self-study and then sit for the exam. This year was a little, the 2020 was a little wonky, if you haven't noticed, including AP, where AP really kind of let the reins out. So if you wanted to take a test, you could, you could apply and take a test. Even if you didn't study or enrolled, the results came back to us. We had some more of that than, than we anticipated or had discussed with students. Next, on the next slide, you look at our participation rates and there's a dotted line at the top. That's the number of exams we were to administer. There was 945 exams that we were going to administer and with 454 students. As a result of the pandemic, we actually ended up with students opting out of taking exams and not registering. They were worried about probably paying the fee or they just worried about their preparedness for it. So we administered 860 exams and we had 425 students participate. The trend continues to, this upward trajectory around this. And for those in the audience, AP can advance students or colleges and universities can award credit to students who are entering or matriculating in as freshmen based upon particular programming. We've had a number of students at Shrewsbury High School apply advanced placement credit to their college university and have been able to graduate a semester or a year ahead based upon that. So there is an advantage of taking it. Students who participate in our advanced place program would also report they feel more prepared. And the research would suggest even just participating, not scoring well on exam better prepares students for college and university. And also in terms of attrition, there's research that would suggest participation in advanced placement programming, regardless of your scores, kids that participate in that are more likely to complete college. that are more likely to complete college or university. In terms of, I went over this in the last slide with the chart, four hundred and fifty-four students, nine hundred and forty-five exams, and four twenty-four, eight sixty. So the interesting part, if you just want to go back, there are twenty-one students, some students experienced technical difficulties with the internet. Some students went through exams and they get it dropped and then they, college board was gracious enough to allow students to retake exams. And we've had twenty-one students that tested late after experiencing some snafu with technology. And then we had five more that had continued difficulties and had to retest in June. So again, 2020 for advanced placement, the class of 2020, there were some, certainly some challenges associated with testing. Again, across the board, just a trend, the blue, the blue pie chart is Shrewsbury High School, the right is Massachusetts, and the green is national. We're, we're outperforming our peers pretty much across the board, both here in the state and nationally. And I attribute to the preparedness of our entire school community pre-K through twelve and the teachers that have gotten kids ready for this type of rigor. A passing score on advanced placement is five, four, or three, or credit-bearing score, I shouldn't say passing, but you could be eligible for credit. And as you look across the pie chart, left to right is 2018, 2019, and 2020. We've had extreme success and yes, we had a little bit of dip to be expected, I think, given the circumstances, but we're on track and really truly do well in these exams.
So one of the things that we also look at are the number of AP exams that our students take. So when we compare that nationally in this chart, we look at the number of exams. So for a student taking one exam, students at Shrewsbury High School, this look at the senior class only for the class of 2020. So twenty-one percent of the students took only one exam compared to fifty-five percent nationally. When we look at students taking two or three exams, thirty-two percent at Shrewsbury High School and thirty-six percent of national, looking at the national grade level 2020. When we look at the number of students taking four or more exams at Shrewsbury High School, we had forty percent of our students take four or more, whereas nationally, we look at, they took, about nine percent of the students took four or more exams. So we're basically looking at the opposite effect in terms of the number of exams that students are taking. With this said, I think it's really important to note that we do try to work with students and families to balance that schedule because the number of exams, or the number of AP courses can be very challenging for students. We do recommend students take no more than three exam, three courses, AP courses per year. However, certainly there are students, we do individualize what students take on their schedules. But that's typically a conversation that we often have with students taking multiple exams. So, and this kind of comes into play in terms of looking at our AP scholars. So this chart tracks the number of students that are receiving, kind of like this, a scholar's distinction with the AP scores. So with the AP scholar students, it's granted to students who receive scores of three or higher on three or more exams. With the scholar with honors, they're receiving a three or higher on four or more exams. And then the scholar with distinction, they're receiving a three or higher on five or more of these exams. And for the national AP scholar, we're looking at students who scored a four or higher on eight or more exams. So for the class of 2020, we had three students at the national scholar level. But overall, if you look at the total number of AP scholars, we had a hundred and sixty-seven students that did very well with their, with the APs and the number of APs that they took.
Yeah, some context too is nearly half of the students scored, that participated in advanced placement scored a five, while over three-quarters scored a four or a five. So seventy-five percent scored a four or a five when you look at the entire body of students.
One of the things that we send to all colleges and all applications is the school profile. We have information on the community demographic, our graduation requirements, our course leveling, our GPA scale, also our average AP SAT scores, a little snapshot of our future plans report from the class, the prior class. This is all information that the colleges request for, so this does go out to all applications that we send to the colleges. With this year, we did add one little piece about how we graded our students from this past spring with the pass fail. And it was so typical for most colleges, a lot of colleges that were, were doing forums or that I collaborated with some in terms of doing a, the nuts and bolts night, really spoke to this as this has just been a general theme. There was a lot of concern from families regarding that pass fail semester, but it was so typical of so many schools that most colleges understood, so.
Yeah, kudos to Mrs. Wen again for looking at our school profile and making adjustments after meeting with numerous college admissions counselors and looking for suggestions to how to make our profile kind of pop for admissions counselors when they're looking in a bunker with all the screens of students' applications and what makes our school different than others. She's taken the recommendations from admissions counselors across the region and the country, from the conferences she's attended, and reframed and readjusted our profile. So we've had, I want to say we've had more success with some of the more competitive schools as we talked about earlier. I'm not sure if that's a function of the strength of the class or accommodation of Mrs. Wen's work, but I think part and parcel is she's very forward-thinking and progressive in trying to give our students here in Shrewsbury an advantage in keeping ahead of everyone else in terms of adjusting as, as accordingly. So again, thanks to her and her department for their thoughtfulness around this and really staying ahead of the curve. So we always talk about how do we maintain and improve our scores. I think what we, for those that don't know this, we offer in, well, not right now, but in the past, we've offered in-person SAT prep taught by our teachers. If you look, there's, we also have PSATs offered to all sophomores and juniors and we look at the grade levels who participate in that test. In terms of the SAT prep that's occurring this year, we have one section in the fall of forty-seven students, two teachers are teaching it. It happens once a week, it's through via Zoom. In the, in the spring, we hope to offer two sections. We offer baseline SAT test at the beginning and then after they go through the strategies course, we offer one at the end and we try and look to see what happens. It's a good value, it's a little bit of a sales pitch too, so if you're interested in this, affordable SAT prep with Shrewsbury High School faculty, that's available in the spring, so be on the lookout for that. And our students have had success with that. We also, we also offer that to surrounding communities, so we do have other communities who have come in. And right now, we have two communities, students from two communities, check three communities, that are actually zooming in and the fee structure is a little bit different for residents, there's a discounted rate and non-residents is a different rate. So again, what we do is we're going to continue to look at, disaggregate the data with directors, they took a hard look at this and then make adjustments according to instructional practices and then take a look at what we're doing, what the adjustments have made with college board. And then we have to figure out what's going to happen with advanced placement testing in the spring, and I don't have an answer right now. It might be online from home, it might be in person. We'll know more when we know more. You'll know more when we know more. But we'll answer any questions you may have at this time. So thank you.
Yeah, great report. It's really great to see how well we're performing in terms of testing compared to the national average and the state average. I think the community should be proud to live in a district that's so high-performing. And I mean, really, those numbers kind of confirm what we already knew about how well we perform and the work that goes into it from our educators. I did have a question about the SAT participation rate. I did notice between 2015 and 2018, there was a decline, I think from ninety-six percent to eighty-eight percent, but now it's kind of spiked back up to 2015 levels. I'm just curious what you might attribute like participation decline, you know, increase to? Is there anything in particular?
Are you speaking for the SAT?
SAT, yes, sorry.
So with the SAT, I think it's been, I think what we're going to see is our, our numbers are, it's going to be wonky because of the closing of test centers and the number of students, as Mr. Biddilo had, had spoken about, families really trying to reach out to other states even to take the test. I, I think that's going to be, and that started last year in the spring when we went, when so many centers went into a shutdown, including this summer, and so many people were in a panic about it. So I think in participation, the increase that we've seen in SATs over the year, I think attributes to a lot of the changes that they made and with their new CEO, really their campaign for advertising the SAT. The ACT, I would say, what I've seen with the drop in ACT is they've had a much bigger struggle than the college board with the SAT in terms of administration. So I've seen the center shut down on both, but the centers for the SAT have bounced back a little bit more with the safety guidelines. Some of these participation numbers also come into this past spring as well in terms of the participation. But I think in terms of dips in numbers, it's typically not so great. What I've seen, what I've seen more and more over the years and significantly this year are the number of schools that are really pushing the test optional. I think the challenge that a lot of families and colleges have reported this fall in, in speaking to a lot of colleges, they've reported that they're seeing more families and students concerned about taking an SAT when they're test optional, so that when they're, when they say they're test optional, they really mean test optional, like they are not looking at the test scores. But they're seeing a real push from students and families feeling like they need to take it still, if that makes sense. So I think that kind of puts people into a panic to taking the test, but because the availability of testing has been limited, it's been difficult.
I'd also add, I'm not entirely sure. I really don't, when I look at the ACT participation, the SAT participation, they, they bisect each other, ACT is on the way down, SAT is on the way up. It might be the restructure and then people thinking that ACT might be a better match and a better fit. I mean, we had a high of a hundred and forty-eight three years ago and now we're down to ninety-five and SAT participation has taken off. And at that year that we had that high of ACT participation, that was one of our lowest rates of SAT participation. So I'm not sure, it's like I'm going to take one test and not the other. I couldn't, I couldn't tell one, one way from another, but just looking at the graphs quickly, it's like I'm wondering if that's, there's some sort of correlation there between the two, like I'll take one exam and not the other, I'll sit for one and not the other. So, but I don't have a, a reason other than.
I think, I think also it used to be that the SAT was an aptitude test and that the tests were very different. And now that they changed the SAT to be similar to the ACT, I think it depends on when people have kind of caught on to that. Because it used to be the recommendation that you took both. If you did well in one, some students will do better in one than the other, but they don't know until they take it. So it, it, there's, there's so many different factors that come into play with that. But I think now that they're sort of similar, I think we're going to see some changes in that too.
Thank you.
So I just, I'm trying to get my head around how we use SATs. I think you're in the position of trying to counsel students and get them into college if that's where they want to go. And a big part of that is the SAT. And we look at the numbers as kind of real numbers. Five-eighty is bigger than five-seventy-five or five-twenty or whatever. And I'm wondering how the colleges use those numbers, because it seems to me that part of the, the reason for taking an SAT is to predict someone's success in college. And I would imagine that there's a band that describes someone's performance that may be a whole lot wider than these, these numbers we look at that may differ by five or six points. It may be that five-fifty and six-hundred all perform about in the same range, but I wonder if colleges actually view the test that way or whether they're sitting there saying, you know, a five-seventy-five is, trumps a five-seventy.
I think the colleges will tell you they look at applications holistically.
Yeah.
I do, I like, I want to think that's true. I think you're also at a, if you're going to attend Arizona State University and, or Ohio State University and looking to apply, there's tens of thousands of applications they have to go through. So I would probably surmise, and you can help me here, that if you include the metrics, they're probably going to be included in their decision-making. So if you have high metrics, you may want to include it. If you have not so high metrics, that look at the profile, and I think there's evidence that would say, and they'll tell you basically that we take this kind of student with this type of grades, historically, grades in GPA and SAT scores, and that's kind of how we look at where students might target some of the schools based upon that. We have scatter plots that are used in our new online program score, which is, I think, really user-friendly and helps kids kind of decipher those things. And it looks at historical data, so provides families a good idea of what that looks like. But I can't tell you with any certainty, although they say test optional, they're really stressing test optional, test optional, test optional. I think there are people who have really remarkable test scores that would say this might give me advantage, I'm going to send it in. And they might, they might use it, they might not, I don't know.
I think the colleges have been very transparent and Mr. Biddilo's right, some of the larger universities, U Michigan, will say that we need those test scores and we want to look at those test scores. So as much as there's been a huge shift in, in colleges saying that we do not require it for one year, possibly two years, and for some have dropped it altogether, there are still some small select schools who do require it. One of the big questions, just to take it a little bit further, one of the big questions about schools that have made their scores test optional and they do look at things holistically, a lot of families were concerned about needing that test score for scholarships, for particular programs like nursing. And the colleges who have become test optional have been very transparent with, we are not considering them for scholarships if they've gone that route, we're not considering them for even OT or nursing. So they've been very transparent with everyone and how they're doing things. In terms of the holistic, what's interesting is UMass has gone holistic. And I think as schools make the shift, it is going to be a shift. I don't think it's going to be a perfect, we are completely holistic, because there's a lot of training that goes through that process. What's interesting that I've seen when UMass announced that they were going holistic and the volumes of applications that they were receiving, our students were not hearing until very late in the game, I mean, into mid-April, they were still making decisions. And when I was inquiring, it was because they were really taking that time to be as holistic as possible. But you are right, in terms of schools that are making that shift, I think it's going to be a work in progress for them. It's not going to be completely perfect, but students can submit the scores still.
Just a, sort of a bit of a follow-up here. The holistic term sounds very good. And I guess in the end, what I'm wondering about, we spend a lot of time talking about stress levels and, and you know, what everybody's going through. And, and certainly getting into college is one of the focuses of stress for, for high school. And I guess in the end, what I'm curious about is do you see this, we're going to move to a holistic thing as being the, making the application more of a black box? Or is it, is it dialing down the stress? Which way is the stress going with this move?
That's a great question. That's a great question. I'm not sure I can answer it because I think I could speak to both, both ends of it. I do think that, what I would say is that people's, students' experiences typically mirror what their parents' experiences have been. And I think when parents have seen SAT, ACT, and hear stories about AP and all these things that are in our community, they kind of put together their own formula of what it's going to take to get into X school. And if Johnny did it, and Johnny lives next door and he's really great and my kid's really great too, let's kind of find out what the recipe is and go from there. So I think there's, there's some of that, certainly. I do think that colleges and universities have been transparent and particularly with exclusive programs, engineering at UMass, nursing at UMass, computer science at UMass, they want more metrics, they want, because they're, you know, the nursing program might take sixty students at UMass. That's it. It's very, very elite, it's the number one program out there, that, computer science and engineering are three top, and very, very difficult to get into. So when we So when we see those things, I think they could say that, and I think some of it is the volume piece, how are they gonna keep up with the volume? That's what I'm curious about, the big universities. But I don't have an answer, but, but I do think it, I think all, the whole thing's stressful. I think when we had stress this fall around kids not getting the SATs site for testing centers because of the pandemic, it was extremely incredibly stressful for students. And, and I feel the phone calls from parents, like, what are we gonna do? Well, that's a test, all these schools are going test optional. Well, I don't believe that. And I think there's some work that has to be done with the university around that, and they have to see what the outcomes are. I think, I think our profile helps students, I think our scores, which we certainly highlight, help our students, and I think our reputation with readers in the region, absolutely, and the people we send to those universities. When readers in our region see Shrewsbury High School, they know they come from a very high-quality school with a high-quality education, that's a very, a very nice community that prepares kids really well for, for post-secondary success. And those metrics play themselves out in graduation rates, attrition rates, and all those things. So maybe I'm speaking too much, but I think those are all things that factor in, but it will be interesting to see how it plays out in the short term and the long run. I just don't have an answer, a clear answer for you.
Lindsay.
Yeah, and thinking about the stress, and I want to go to the AP exam, so that's starting earlier than there's the high school, no, the college application process, which we've talked a lot about, is obviously a lot of stress there. And I guess I was just a little confused in some of the numbers, and I want to make sure I understand. You had a slide that had, it was titled, "The Number of Exams Per Student," Shrewsbury High School, and nationally. And I guess I'm wondering, those Shrewsbury High School numbers, I thought you said that was just the class of 2020, but if that's true, is it really true that 47% of the class of 2020 took four AP exams last year? Or was that over the course of their?
That's over the course of their high school career.
Okay, because I was like, we have not dialed down the stress at all.
Right.
Okay, so over the course of their high school career, they maybe took two junior year and two senior year.
Correct. So we usually recommend students take no more than three per year. That's like our average recommendation.
I heard you say that afterwards, and I was like, so no one's listening to us? Or was it? Okay.
Say this at AP night, again, for the audience, juniors who are taking AP, like, two is a solid number, three is very, very challenging to manage. Very, very challenging. The most stress we see from juniors is those that take three advanced placement courses. And, you know, two is, we could talk for hours about the, the volume of work in advanced placement. However, if you're listening in the audience, if you're looking at advanced placement, come to, we'll have an AP night again in the spring, listen to what it's about, but two, two's a good number, a good solid base for really, really high-performing elite students. Three is like, really, really challenging, very, very challenging and difficult. And again, as they get used to this rigor, they increase their, their offerings usually senior year. I think kids that take two might take another two or take three, and some kids really extend and go beyond, and they're really, really gifted and elite students too.
But we really do try to help students balance that schedule just to maintain that well-being and enjoy high school and enjoy discovering different things about them and being able to grow. So I, I think that's the one thing when we go through the course registration processes to try to help students and families realistically balance that.
And if I can, I had, I had not known that there was a correlation between just taking an AP exam and then doing well in school, and more importantly, completing it. I mean, some of us have spent some time thinking about how many of our young people enroll in college and how many of them graduate after six years, and those are numbers that we don't like to talk about, because it's, we'd like them to be higher than they are. But I had not appreciated that there was a correlation there, and that, that sitting through an AP class, then taking the exam, whether you do well on it or not, actually helps you prepare and maybe really understand what you're getting into, which is another reason to do these, the opposite of the stress side of the house, but, but to actually really think about, is this, is college a good fit for me? Right? And, and, you know, thinking about the two-year programs, and maybe those make sense before you decide, and, and take on what we also know the other part of this is all of the debt that families take on, you know, so they're, that makes the application fees seem trivial compared to the debt that they, they will have at the end of the day. So good to know where, where we're at. Thank you for all of this information.
Thank you again. I always like looking at this report. I think it gives us a good benchmark when we look at these test results, you know, this is kind of the end, how are students doing after they've been in this district for 12 years? And I also like looking at where the students enroll, we have a detailed report, and it's such an impressive list of schools, like, they're really going to a lot of places and, you know, exploring. And the other thing I always think of, my own children or their friends talking about, they were really prepared when they got to college, and I think that's what we want as school committee members, that our students leave here prepared for that next step, whatever it is, you know, if it's work, or college, or two-year, or four-year, that they're ready for that next step. And I think this report kind of gives us that data, and it's helpful to see that. And while Mrs. Wen is here, we want to publicly thank you, I know Mr. Nevada was here, just all of the work that you put into the whole scheduling process this year, above and beyond, and, and a lot of, I don't know how you guys do it, and we said that last time, so thank you very much for everything that you've done with the whole scheduling piece getting this year and our students ready. So thank you.
I just want to say that it's, can I just say that it's a challenging year for everyone? So I, I think we're kind of all in the same boat with that.
Yeah. All in together, right.
And Ms. Wen is humbled, because she does deserve kudos for the level of effort that she, in combination with Mr. Nevada, went to during the summer and the early fall, was really remarkable. And I want to thank her and Mr. Buzillo for the report. I think the insight is important, and again, just as we talked about with college matriculation and what students want to do after high school, whether it's college or something different, we're looking for the right fit. I think that, you know, one of the things we pride ourselves on is that we position students to have choice. And obviously, having a strong academic program that has options for students, such as AP, and prepares them in different ways to be successful, and where, you know, as mentioned, the SAT is becoming more like the ACT, and probably is, you know, hopefully to some degree, becoming more sensitive to having solid curriculum experiences, as opposed to being prepped by, you know, private coaches, or companies, or things of that nature, which obviously is, you know, the higher the socioeconomic status of a community, the more likely they're going to have high SAT scores because of that. But I know that there is a bit of a move to try to make it a little more sensitive to just getting, being, having a good high school experience. But I do think that all those things combined put Shrewsbury High School students in a position where they have the opportunity to make the best choices for themselves and aren't shut out of opportunities because of a lack of something in their academic background. So again, thank you, and we appreciate all the hard work on behalf of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we're gonna talk about the STAR assessment for grades K through eight. Ms. Clouder is here. And this year, the district is implementing a new approach to assessment to better identify and address student learning needs by using a common tool to track student progress across grade level spans. Turn it over to Ms. Clouder.
That was a mouthful. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk about a new tool. Although the pandemic has certainly presented us with a number of challenges, you've also seen that we've grown considerably from facing those challenges, and I hope that the way that we'll be approaching assessment grows our practice too. So today's objectives are pretty basic. The purpose of this presentation is really just to provide an overview to the new assessment system. The goal for me is to take about 10 minutes to go through the slides themselves and give you a sense of the tool in action after that, and I'll pause for questions at the end. And since you have some more specifics in your report and your book, and you have read through those details, I, I think the big piece is focusing on these three topics, which are, why are we implementing a universal screener? What the assessment does? And then, most importantly, how it would be useful to us. So in terms of why this tool and why now, you know from the research, researcher Simon Sennec, which we often quote a lot, that understanding the why is really important when you're embracing a change, and there are really three answers to the why question when we're thinking about the STAR assessment. The work of having an assessment like this will benefit students. The work will ease the burden for individual educators who already prioritize assessment but have to compile information from a lot of different places in order to think about making it useful. And this work will improve the district as an organization. In other words, partly why we're beginning this work is really to improve the system as a whole. And when I say system, I think it's important to kind of ground us back into this MTSS, which is the multi-tiered system of support model that you've seen in presentations from Mrs. Belcito and me in the past. This graphic, I think, is really familiar. You'll recognize the inside with tier one, tier two, and tier three is that triangle of the base being very solid to support, and the instruction that kids get, all kids get, and then more levels of support depending on student need as you go up to the second tier. Although most students in Shrewsbury are doing very well, we also have to acknowledge that some students will need support to reach grade level benchmarks, and that additional support in tier two and three is something that we've been working on refining so that we can offer consistent support in terms of identifying students that require specialized instruction, and in terms of sharing responsibility for progress monitoring across levels. So in other words, if a student is receiving support at the elementary level, what does that look like when they transition to Sherwood? So although the tool is new, we've been working on that initiative for some time, and that started almost two years ago with a group of people from Coolidge Floral and Sherwood called the Student Success Academy Team. The state had convened two groups with the Rennie Center, one to focus on social emotional learning, and one really to focus on multi-tiered systems of support. And I just want to acknowledge Tiffany Ostrander, Erin Kendrick, Maureen Henry, Lisa McCubrey, Gina Kelly, Tara Plord, Shelley Hoey, Lisa Daly, Patty Waterhouse, and Karen Gudicant, who are on that initial team, doing a lot of deep thinking about, how can we improve the system that's already pretty good in Shrewsbury? And this work was kind of accelerated in thinking about, how are we gonna conduct assessment practices in this environment? So in terms of improving our efforts at effective intervention, we think about kind of this notion of the core, and Katie Novak, who writes about universal design for learning, likens tier one to the bottom part of a snowman, in the sense that you, you can't have a snowman at all if you don't build that base really strong, and you can't intervene your way out of bad core instruction. So that, that bottom piece is really important. And when you think about assessment, when we present material to students and then we find out how well they mastered it, that gives us more tools to grow our repertoire for tier one. So assessment is about looking at students, but it also is about growing really good, strong repertoire for instructional practice. So when students are not achieving with the core, with the bottom layer of tier one instruction, then something in the system needs shoring up, because families are sending us the best students they have. They're not hiding any other good ones at home. And so if we want all students to achieve the outcomes we just heard about from the high school, we've got to figure out how to give more to students that are not doing well with just tier one. And we have to figure that out early, because the sooner that we can identify who needs more support, the sooner we can work on closing that gap, and the gap itself will be smaller. So we've always had skillful educators who use data to drive their practice, but it was problematic that our systems didn't align across levels. So it was a common issue that was identified in our S3 conversations, that, you know, students who were leaving grade four going to Sherwood, they'd say, well, what's my student's level at? Because they were used to hearing about their DRA levels, they didn't use the DRA at Sherwood. They had a different system of assessing student progress. And that was, that was a glitch we could fix. So we focused really narrowly with that group on thinking about literacy. But essentially, the takeaway from participating in that work was that we needed a screening tool, and it needed to be a universal tool. So we would look at all kids on a regular basis against the same metrics, so that we can identify who needs the core, who needs more, and who might need even more. And then that gets at the tool, being able to prac, to kind of help us monitor the progress of kids that got support, so that we could think of how effective our interventions were. So essentially, the screening tool helps us with students, but it also helps us monitor our own practice in terms of that bottom core layer of instruction, and then how well we're doing with intervention. So that was a lot, sorry. So the reason that we want to focus on this also is kind of to give teams really good information. It might take a little longer for this initial round of testing, because it's our first time from the educator side and first time for students. And I think along those lines, it's worth noting that in grades three and four, they typically take MCAS online, so at least we have a core group of kids that have had some experience with online testing, and we're not going to have that. So we know that it might take us a little bit, while to get through administration. And also in this format, students will have to get used to seeing some questions they can't answer. One of the features of the adaptive software that you'll see in a bit is that this might mean that kids have to take longer to read certain, think about certain questions, and that, that's okay, because the test is designed for all kids to see some questions that are gonna be just right, some questions that are gonna be too hard, some questions that are gonna be too easy, and then they calibrate that. But when we think about kind of taking the assessment in a short amount of time, because it should take ultimately about 20 minutes, all of the information after testing is immediately available. And I think about looking at DRA scores, and I think about the degrees of charts that we had for each grade level, for where students were, and how we would assign responsibilities for them, and preparing the data just to have the conversation took a considerable amount of time. And so when we think about the burden that educators are carrying now with the pandemic, it's really appealing to think about something that as soon as it's administered, everybody can see the data simultaneously, and we can start talking about the interventions as about organizing the conversation about the results. The other piece, I'm sorry, is that this system will align with Freckle. And if you recall from the previous presentations in the spring, Freckle is the system that we bought to facilitate independent practice in reading and math. And so having these results can help us then target student work independently in that platform as well, and we're interested to see how well those things align. But, you know, you mentioned our strategic goals earlier, and I think part of the reason we began this work with the S3 group a long time ago is that it was rooted in kind of one of the things we wanted to do, helping address learning environments where everybody's success matters, and to meet those related goals that are listed up there. Again, I think monitoring student progress against grade level benchmarks is something that's long been, something that's worked for us and worked for students. But thinking about evidence-based supports and strategies that kind of sustain student growth, no matter where a student is performing, and looking at that in a consistent way across schools will be a new opportunity for us. So if you think about multi-tiered systems of support, it's not really just about tiered interventions, but how all the systems in a school and district tie together to ensure a high-quality experience for all students. And I think that universal piece is a real key ingredient of developing kind of a proactive approach to aligning supports where they're most needed. Both supports for students who need them and educators who might have a different varying number of kids who are struggling with something, and we have to kind of be able to transition quickly to support them. So in terms of what the STAR assessment does, typically the assessment's given three times in, in kind of a window. There's a fall window, a winter window, and a spring window. This year, we're administered in the winter and the spring. And each test is kind of a snapshot of student performance, and this graphic is kind of a snapshot of one test. Can you go one forward? So you can see, this isn't a test that students can study for, and as you've mentioned already, students will see some test questions that are too hard and some that are too easy, until it calibrates or adapts over time to finding the just-right match for them. Responses to the questions then will reveal kind of understanding, and the program will adjust based on the students' answers, both the correct answers they give and incorrect answers. So this gray bar in the chart here represents the level of confidence that the metrics have in identifying a student's level correctly. And over time, you can see that gray band shrinks considerably over the course of the questions. And when we do the demonstration, I think you'll get a sense of how that works. The value of the program is that after we can identify which students need the most support, we can also monitor student progress for some kids that seem to be below benchmark more often using the same system. So if we wanted to, we could continually test students below benchmark every week. We're not going to do that. But it enables us to have a snapshot of performance after intervention has happened. And typically, another thing we've learned in partnership with the Rennie Center is, you'd want to administer intervention and then assess how well that assessment is, that intervention is going after six weeks, and we can do that here with the same tool, just really appealing. So these are the three tests we're going to be administering. The STAR reading kind of looks at five key domains, and those are word knowledge and skills, comprehension, analyzing literary text, understanding author's craft, analyzing argument and evaluating text. STAR math looks at numbers and operations, algebra, geometry and measurement, data analysis, statistics and probability. And then the early literacy test is for students that aren't yet independent readers, so it combines some early numeracy as well as early literacy. And again, if a student And again, if a student is not able to progress through the test, the test will adjust down. And there are different limits that can guide educators to know if a student is on the cusp in kindergarten, whether they should take the STAR reading test or the Early Literacy Test. And again, if a student is struggling with reading beyond Grade K or One, that Early Literacy Test will be delivered orally so we can still kind of gauge student understanding. So, what will students experience? They get 34 questions on the reading and math test. They get a certain amount of time per item. And we can give students accommodations of more time if that's something that's a typical accommodation for students. But because we expect that they will see questions that they can't answer by design, they get a little prompt to kind of move along and do their best thinking. And that's part of the metrics of the adaptive software. It's understandable that some kids will be excited about that and some kids will be anxious about that. And that will be true for parents, too. And in searching for a new assessment tool, we were really looking for a way to gather information efficiently. And in addition to kind of reducing kids' anxiety during testing, mitigating the loss of instructional time that's associated with more lengthy tests. So, because of the nature of that software, students will expect to see some questions that might stump them. And it's okay to do their best and move on. And the program will adjust. And the timing can be adjusted if it needs to be. But this generally just explains kind of how many seconds are allotted per item by grade so that you can see, for example, there's 90 seconds per item that could be extended for Early Literacy. But there's three minutes per item for STAR Math, which is going to be more for older kids. A clock appears to kind of show if students are waiting too long. So, they also get kind of this prompt to be kind of independent in taking the test. And I think as we orient students to get ready for that, one of the things we'll talk about is how to manage that so that it's not a surprise when they see it pop up. And again, that will help our younger students anticipate what the climate for online testing is when they take the state assessment. Sorry. So, I was looking for a picture of someone at three different stages in their lives. And Beth was saying I was doing this to be exciting during my presentation, but really Drew Barrymore was the person I could find at three different points. And I think the notion here is that the idea is to take snapshots of student performance and then get a sense of how we can use that information to match instruction to student needs and to give us an opportunity kind of between those windows to think about what are some interventions that might help that student perform better. So, we get a report out at the end of this data with how students have done according to the standards, the state standards in Massachusetts, how they've done in terms of those skills. So, I talked about the different domains that are measured and would hear about students' word skills or vocabulary, for example. And then that shows us also kind of growth over time if we're looking at three assessment windows or even two assessment windows and an interim time for students that are below benchmark. So, this allows us to kind of compare student scores to all the other students that took, at that grade level, that took the test at the same time. And that gives us kind of a percentile rank and also a scaled score based on the Massachusetts learning standards. So, it accounts for, and this is a whole separate presentation about how they do this, but what it takes to get within the proficiency grade band according to the MCAS. So, the assessment is scaled depending on the state testing requirements. So, if we were taking the STAR assessment in Wisconsin, it would be scaled to the Wisconsin metrics. The Massachusetts communities, it's scaled to the MCAS requirements. And so, it should be a predictor for students in terms of how well that they will do ultimately when they take the state assessment in meeting state standards along the way. One of the things that's important to realize is that, you know, parents might get a score that says, "Well, your student is reading, you know, above grade level in this area." And parents often, when they see that, say, "Oh, well, they should be moved to that grade level." It's important to think of, this is mastery within specific domains, but we wouldn't consider a child needing to move to a different grade level unless they had mastered all of those domains. And that's really rare to do that. So, when we are sharing score results, it's important to also kind of think about how to interpret them. And after we talk about what the administration will look like itself, we'll talk about how to make meaning of that data and how to share that with parents. For teachers, oh, in terms of how, no, that's okay. How the STAR assessment will be useful to us, there's also a resource embedded in the platform called an instructional planner. So, there are some activities. For example, if a student is struggling with vocabulary, it might point teachers in the direction of, "Here's some vocabulary resources." And some of those would be within the Freckle platform, but some of them might not be. And so, having a kind of a go-to place to think about interventions built within the results, I think, is helpful. But also, I think it's a matter of looking at how well does the recommendations for what students would practice in Freckle kind of match what we would do? And I'm curious to find out that piece. Mostly, we're looking at an efficient way to collect data and especially to kind of see how the pandemic has impacted student's success. So, I mentioned before, you can see kind of normed results nationally because the assessment tool is used nationally. You can see them, you know, students based within their grade band within just the state. And then also, you can compare student scores across the district at the same level. Each item, you know, that's tested has an assigned value on the scaled score. And so, the skills kind of based on the level of difficulty in the question. And the advantage of kind of using a screener like this is that we have this pool of data that we can kind of compare our students against. I think that the notion of looking at the data is mostly to think about how can we intervene early in ways that are most effective? And so, for me, I'm also intrigued about if we see the comparison, we can see the comparison of other people's effectiveness in terms of their interventions. And then that can drive growing kind of, so what are they doing in that state that's helping their kids in that level grow faster? I'm just interested in that kind of thing. And, you know, we can administer the test or portions of the test in between. So, if we had a student struggling in math, we could administer that more frequently just to get a sense about whether there's improvement. The big idea is to help educators improve on what they're already doing. And it should help us identify students that need help, monitor their progress, grow our repertoire for good instruction, streamline data meetings. We know that we're really struggling to find time to have early intervention team meetings at all. So, being able to make the most of that time is really critical. And then, we want to do a better job of aligning the supports we offer students across levels so that it feels more cohesive to students and parents. And finally, we can see kind of how kids are doing in one place, not only within the elementary level, but across K to eight. And I mentioned also that it helps kind of fine-tune practice in Freckle. The other piece, I think, is it will help us to have more information about the impact of the closure and help have parents have more information in their fingertips because students will take this test on their iPad. Students will see some of those results and can set goals, you know, reflective of those results. And I think, you know, paired with tools like ST Math or Freckle, Alex, it enables us to think about that notion of differentiated homework in ways that don't overburden teachers, too. And so, aligning the assessment with some of the practice in a more deliberate way is another piece that we're thinking about. Again, you know, we pride ourselves on strong school cultures where educators share responsibility for meeting the needs of all learners. And data makes good decision-making better. So, if we can get rid of all that charting and see the data results instantly with minimal effort, I think that will boost the collaboration that's already there and make the most of the precious time that we're using now for planning and collaborating. Kind of in a narrow way, we can grow that. So, Clever was installed today. Mr. Leroux worked really, really hard to prep student lists so that we can do our launch on a soft scale. We have one person at each grade level that's doing an initial test so we can learn from that implementation how best to prepare students, how to make sure the technology is functioning before we launch with everyone next week. And we'll be launching with Cohort B next week and then Cohort C at the end of next week. And then we'll have a bigger approach. So, these are some of the target administration dates. Middle school's approaching it a little differently because they have teams, they have a team approach. And so, they're going to have an assessment window with teams deciding when they administer that assessment. But by December 18th or so, we should have completed testing if everything goes well and have some results to really parse out with our teachers. And here are the folks that made this possible. These are the people who volunteered to go first, and that's a huge thing. So, thanks to all those educators for making this dream that we've been working on for two years kind of an initial reality. And thanks to all of you for supporting the purchase of the software. So, I'd like to demonstrate how it works. Brian is going to play the part of a third grader. You're all expected to help him. Okay, so you can see that the program starts with a warm-up. Click that tile. There you go. Choose the top one, I think. It's admin. There you go. So, the student gets a cue. So, John showed me the largest tree in town. What's another word for largest? Hardest, oldest, or biggest? It's kind of hard for Brian to do.
Over your shoulder.
Yeah. So, you hit return and then it will let it go in. Okay, we went for a blank in the car. Students can see the word in the blank so that they can check their answer. Cat, dog, and mouse have a race. Dog runs fast. Cat and mouse run slow. Dog wins. Who wins? So, again, students are just getting acclimated to what it means to press the answer and what it looks like. Then they take the test. A sailboat is large and needs a blank of four people. Folk, crew, mast, or kingdom? I used my aunt, I used to see my aunt often, but I haven't visited her blank.
Does it tell you if you get the wrong answer?
So, we'll do the wrong answer. Let's do that next, Brian. I want to see if we can get to the comprehension. And you'll notice we haven't reached the time limit or seen the clock yet. But if we waited it out, we could. I believe everyone should volunteer in the community. So, I made that, so I made that my essays. I made that my essays. Thesis, libel, ruse, or audit? If your cough doesn't clear up soon, you should blank a doctor. On the Fourth of July, our school band always plays blank songs. So, choose the wrong answer, Brian. So, it just gives you a different question. The sidewalk is slippery, so it's blank to use caution when walking. Many fashion magazines are printed on blank paper. Now, if a student retakes it, they get different questions and different answers. And so, what's interesting to me is when I first demoed this, go ahead. It got to the comprehension piece right away. And this is taking us longer to go through vocabulary. I sent a letter to my grandmother with a photograph. Automobile is powered by an internal blank engine. He does not eat in expensive restaurants very often because he is blank with his money.
Would this continue the vocabulary piece longer as long as you keep hitting correct answers?
It's interesting. It didn't when I took it before. And I assume my answers were correct. There we go. Okay. So, now we're off vocabulary and you can see we're into comprehension. And they've geared the text to the level of competency we demonstrated in the vocabulary piece. So, if they have to gauge kind of where your word level is, that's where they would adjust that. And then you can see, you know, based on this text, you're thinking about either analyzing the argument or you're thinking about author's theme or you're thinking about comprehension in general. And each of these parameters kind of adjusts back based on incorrect answers. So, I've played with this quite a bit to see. But these questions really mimic quite well what kids are asked to do in terms of the MCAS questions. So, I haven't read this. Have you guys read this? Recent research has confirmed the many health benefits of reading. One study showed that readers live longer and those who read books live longer still. So, it's a good thing to read out loud. Reading has been proven to help senior citizens keep their minds in shape, possibly slowing the effects of aging on memory. Researchers have demonstrated that fiction readers who involve themselves emotionally, oops, there's the clock, in the stories they read become more empathetic. And English researchers found that reading is one of the best stress reduction methods, better than listening to music or taking a walk. How does the author's youth of authority affect the argument? Uh-oh. So, we're going to be moved to the next item if we don't choose something. Yeah, and then we just get another passage. So, you get a clue. You don't get too much time. You can't stress about it. You get another task. But you don't get more than 34 questions. And at the end, you can see we're, you know, 12 out of 34. If for some reason there was a calamity and you had to stop the test, it's possible to do that. If kids go back to it within eight days, they can resume from where they left off. And teachers have the flexibility to give kids more time, as I mentioned. But I think that helps you see some of the same skills we're ultimately looking to get kids to proficiency on at the MCAS sooner and helps kids to kind of experience what that's like. So, thanks, Brian.
Good job, Brian.
So, now that you've seen it, does anyone have questions? I'm happy to.
Questions or comments? Dale.
Hi, this is really interesting. But I, you know, a lot of this involves some abstract thinking that is above me. I'm trying, can you give me an example of how this correlating or adjusting to the MCAS would be different than a Wisconsin test or whatever? What are we talking about there? I don't quite understand how those things work.
Well, each state has different standards. Some of them are similar. Ours are similar to New York, for example. But they're not exactly the same. And the way they assess them is not the same. And so, this assessment system is looking for, how is proficiency rated on the MCAS system? And that's what they want to calibrate their questions and their answers to.
Is this subject, is this specific questions? Is this topics? You know, what are we talking about that is different? I, to me, you know, English comprehension is kind of English comprehension.
Yeah, I think there are some pieces that might be very similar because I would be surprised if all states didn't measure comprehension in some way and tie it to a student's reading level at that particular grade span. But the metrics of how they achieve that, I think, involves a lot of testing of, what is the questioning? What is the ultimate result for students? Were they accurate as the predictor? Do they need to adjust questions? And so, one of the things they mentioned is that some of those questions might be beta questions that the company is testing. Students wouldn't necessarily know that that was a beta question, but that that would factor into kind of how they do that better job of calibrating.
So, then they're going back and they're correlating the results of this to how students do on MCAS?
Mm-hmm.
So, they're getting their MCAS scores?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is really exciting. I'm a big fan of getting some more data to know how our kids are doing in all years, but especially now. And having teachers get some immediate feedback is also huge, right? That there with, for educators, for districts, for parents, the MCAS delay, you feel like we've, you know, we're another whole other year on before we know. So, that's really exciting. Particularly given this year and the way that, particularly for our younger students. for our younger students, what a partnership education looks like between school and home. I'm wondering some thoughts about sort of some rollout strategies for parents, but also what parents should expect on the other side? Because they're such strong partners now in, you know, particularly things like early literacy, playing such a much more active role. When might they see some of the results? What you're thinking is about how to help them know what this, what it means, or what is your maybe framework you're thinking about there?
Well, I do think we need to help parents interpret the results as a starting point and then think, okay, so if this is the results, then what makes sense is the next step. I also think it's always really important, the reason I put that snapshot photo in is like, this is one moment in time, and for a lot of good reasons, kids being so variable in themselves, we might get a wonky result for a kid, and I wouldn't want to cause panic, right? Because we do have some general assessments based on day-to-day work that teachers are doing with kids, the initial kind of DRA work that they did, the fluency reading that's already happening. So, I wouldn't want the one reading score to trump the good judgment and assessment that's already in place. I think it just adds to the conversation, and it adds to the conversation in a way that's consistent across levels. So, I would be cautious about overinterpreting this, especially since it's new to us, and I think we'll learn more about what, how it's most useful the more we use it, particularly for intervention, because those kids receiving intervention will get kind of more dip-sticking than other students who are only participating in the testing windows in the winter and the spring. But parents will surely need, you know, here's some helpful things to do. Oh, you're being prompted to finish. You've been inactive too long. And there are guides built within the, you know, STAR assessment platform. Some of them we've modified to think about, for example, how we might do remote assessment for families in Cohort D and kind of think about next steps. Right now, I'm trying to read, like, it's the holiday season. I'm not sure we want to give people a lot to do. We're going to be really happy to have those results and sit with them and then think about, okay, so in the new year, how might we message the next steps to parents?
Thank you. Jason?
Directly related question. Obviously, stress levels and anxiety levels are something that's been a topic tonight. Obviously, from the backend as educators, this is very exciting as a tool because it has the potential to arm you and your team and your staff with more insightful information, which is exciting and great. I know that for a lot of students and families, the subject of testing can be anxiety-inducing.
Yep.
And, you know, while there's certainly, you know, looking at this interface, I mean, to me, based on other examination systems, I've seen this actually seems perhaps maybe even a little bit more, maybe even a little less stressful. I know that the subject of testing in general and the introduction of new testing can unto itself be anxiety-inducing. So, as you get towards this, this being tested or rolled out, have communication with students or families as to what's going to, have you taken into account in that communication strategies to maybe try to minimize unnecessary anxiety? And it's, so you touched on it a little bit.
Yes. The instructional coaches have put together a student orientation that they were collaborating on today to kind of make sure that students got that, you know, the goal is to do your best. This is a moment in time. It's helpful for us to know what you need next. And, you know, if for some reason there's a difficulty or a student who, you know, like, this is not the right time to assess, we have the flexibility to do that. It's mostly helpful to get the data within a two- to four-week window. So, if we have to expand that, we could, but we were trying to wrap it up in a sense so that we would have a baseline by the time we started the new year because it aligns so well with goal-setting in general and because it really should only take about 20 minutes to administer. When we compared this to other assessment systems last spring, you know, iReady, for example, there's a lot more questions, so kids would have to commit a lot more time. And we were, we appreciated that it was a smaller number of questions to get something as similar as a result because that is weighing on my mind for kids. And there are some kids that will see that clock and feel like beat the clock, and there's some kids that will see that clock and freeze. And, you know, when we, we're trying to prioritize doing the assessment in person wherever possible so that we can set that tone, and if need be, administrate in smaller groups versus the whole class. The fact that it's on students' iPads and is a single kind of press-on icon helps us kind of individualize the administration if we need to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
John?
I like the careful planning behind this. I think this is very important at this point in time, especially with a lot of the concerns that parents have about where their students are regressing. Under normal circumstances, we worry about that over the summer, right? And making sure that they exercise their brain over the summer. Now, it's more about how the hybrid learning or the remote learning has impacted any piece of their education. And I think, you know, communication strategy is important, you know, behind this, how we communicate it to parents, as you've called out, but the careful nature in which we communicate the results, you know, because we need to understand them first before we communicate them out, so.
Yeah, and even when things are smooth, any change, any newness, I think, right now is hard. So, I'm cognizant that, you know, as we're talking about this, it still feels new. It still feels like, okay, wait a minute, how does this work? And I think it's something, it's another thing to think about, which is why we waited. But I'm also mindful that if we really want to leverage using the data, we want to make sure we take advantage of the winter window so that we can do the comparison that's really helpful in terms of the tool. So, I'm really not looking to raise the stress levels. I'm more looking to think about how can we target supports to kids and help simplify the process of identifying who needs intervention and how well it's working because our educators are already spending an awful lot of time invested in tracking student progress.
Yeah. I think just, I think families can take comfort in knowing that this is actually happening and that we're looking ahead to, you know, areas we can mitigate, you know, the important areas of the education for the students. So, thank you.
You know, this is all happening pre-COVID. All this work we're starting, and then now what we're experiencing with COVID and the concerns with regression, you know, going forward, I think it's such a timely to have this come, you know, but again, it will raise some anxiety for families, there's no doubt. But I think it's being done a very thoughtful way. The technology has improved over the years that we have this tool that we're able to use and consistent for, across the grades, so there won't be that, like, well, it's not matching when I get to this level because you use something different. So, I think it's great. And again, very timely because as we come through this, I think we're going to see those students who might not be progressing as they want, or their families, or their teachers, and this is just going to be another tool to kind of identify earlier to help them. So, thank you.
Yeah, it's not a test you can study for. So, we're trying to say, you know, there's no way that you could have prepared yourself to do this or that you, you know, you've missed on practicing something with your student. I think the other piece that, starting with a soft opening, gives us is that we're administering for a class at a time and can kind of watch, how's it going? So, here was our intent to kind of orient students. Is it really working? Do they, you know, what do they look like as they're taking it? And we have time to kind of revise that if we need to, go slower before full implementation. So.
I just, as, sort of for the parent community, I think it's kind of important that we think about how to talk about this as an assessment for teachers. This is not a test of students that what's going to be a graded score, it's going to somehow show up on their report card. This is really helping teachers the same way DRA assessments are, right? They're really important information. And for kids, that looks exactly like what I saw on Freckle on my daughter's iPad earlier today, like, one question per page, like, you click this icon, and now you do this thing for the next 20 minutes. They've been doing that all year, right? Take 20 minutes in Freckle, go do that, and like, okay, that's an assignment. It feels very consistent with what I'm seeing certainly at home, and even looks, the little prompts, little bells, little dinghies. I don't, I don't want to diminish it, but for some, that will absolutely cause anxiety, but many of the apps that our kids are using have all kinds of little pop-ups and things that go on, and they're, you know, they're kind of busy. And so, I hope that we can work with our parent community that they don't raise anxiety unnecessarily, right? That this is for kids, I think, will actually feel very normal with what they're, with this crazy world we're in. This actually feels kind of normal, like, go do 20 minutes on your iPad in math now. And then the teachers have this whole backstory about what this is and what this means, and that we need to figure out how to, I think, communicate that well so that we don't inadvertently have parents, you know, amping kids up when there's no reason a second grader needs to get amped up over, put the word, the right word in the box if it's the right word. And if it's not, do another one. You're not even going to know. You're just going to get another one. So, hopefully, we can figure out how to walk that line with parents because the word, even as Mr. Pallett was just talking, right, the testing anxiety, like, I don't even, I would love it if we could just stay away from that entirely, that it's not really what this is about. It's about assessing our kids and helping them make progress.
I'm glad that you saw it as similar because it struck me that way, too. So, I'm hoping that that's how kids will perceive it because they have had or should have had experience with at least kind of what this format looks like in Freckle.
That's a good point. Lindsay? Dr. Sore, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Ms. Clodder, certainly, for the presentation and for the work and her leadership with this project. She really had pushed the idea of getting a team of the district into the academy with the department a couple of years ago, and I really appreciate all the work of those educators and those who are piloting this now. For all the reasons stated, I think having something that's quick, that is clear for kids, and that provides us with some data to help us understand where kids are and so we can make sure that we're identifying students who may need more intervention and support is always important. It's good practice, and, you know, the sort of certain cycle of being diagnostic and prescriptive is really, this is a key tool that we'll be able to utilize. So, kudos, and we look forward to seeing what happens with it, and I think we'll be very thoughtful, I'm sure, in how it's rolled out and how it's communicated so that it can be not another source of stress, but hopefully, a tool that actually helps our educators help our kids moving forward, which is, I think, will be reassuring if nothing else.
Thank you. And next, we have our minutes from our meeting held on November 18th, 2020. Are there any changes or corrections? Okay, none, those can be marked except as distributed. "We do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements. Purpose seven, open meeting law, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. And B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Purpose three, the Shrewsbury Education Association, Unit A." I have a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
So, moved.
Second. Roll call vote is required. Ms. Heffernan?
Aye.
Mr. Pallett?
Aye.
Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wenski?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you, and good night.